Council meeting to order February sixteenth here in the chambers. And before we really get into the meeting, I have a statement to read. It's about in reference to COVID pandemic advisory due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually. As a courtesy, all attendants should this meeting run past eight o'clock. There will be short recess call at that time. For the public record, for all speakers, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone in order for your voices to be recorded and heard by the virtual attendees. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during this broadcast, public participation portions of the meeting, click the icon, the hand icon in your upper right hand corner on your screen and unmute your microphone. When it's your turn, staff will unmute you and advise you that you are live. You will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, residence, and use proper or forum. The council may choose to respond to your comment and move on or move on to the next commentator until all have been heard. Staff will only be monitoring the raise hand portion of the functions. The question function will not be monitored. Thank you. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. Please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum. Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Prochin Raymond.
Here.
Mrs. Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge, please? The United States of America and to the Republic with its fans, one nation, under our own, in this world, there is no doubt. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for attending. I have a couple of cards I'll be running through real quick. Okay, I have three cards on parking issue. And then we're going to put that under public participation. And I'm going to call Mrs. Derschka up here. Card was first. And as Mrs. Derschka speaks, you come up, please, to the microphone and give us your name and everything. But listen, and if you have something that you want to add to that, please, when I call you or you disagree with everything, let me know and we can move through this. Go ahead, Virginia. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Hoag and City Council. I am Virginia Derschka, and I have been emailing many of you. I'm speaking today on behalf of seventy concerned citizens here in Cape Canaveral who oppose the removal of the native trees on Orange, Harrison, and Magnolia Avenue as part of the MTF project. You have knowledge of the value of trees. Unfortunately, inaccurate information was given about the extent of the removal of these trees. And we now have a new city parking rule that may help the situation. It helps us to revise the plan and keep some of the trees. That was our city manager today. He stated that very thing, that a revised plan may help us to remove fewer trees than maybe no trees. We are hoping that giving the opportunity tonight that you will vote stopper rules of the trees tomorrow because that seems to be what the schedule is, removing tomorrow, and to rework the parking plan for a vote next month. So that is my advice.
You have something, Mike?
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? I have three, two other cards on the same subject, but you both wish to speak on that same subject. It's Brad Purvell. Okay.
My name is Brad Purvell. First of all, I'd like to thank your services. Your honor and council people. I'm not going to echo what Jenny said, okay? But I believe after meeting with the city manager and his staff today, that there's a lot of positive moves that we can make in saving some of these legacy trees that have been in the city for over forty years. I understand it may be a little bit late in the game. However, there have been changes to the plans, and we think we have an opportunity to save some of some of these trees that have been here for over forty years. But something else that is a little more concerning that just we realized during our meeting with the city manager, apparently an osprey nest that was on the light pole over Little League baseball field, and it was an active nest. There was ospreys nesting, is gone. The pole is gone. I don't know if you're all aware of that, but it's kind of shocking. And one of the ospreys is in one of our trees crying. Not like I'm saying this is blackfish with the whales, but it's kind of shocking that that would happen. And I hope the permits were pulled. If not, I hope you all are aware of it. And again, thank you very much for considering cutting back some of the parking spots to save some of our legacy trees. And thank you for your open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The other one is Cheryl Procell.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Cheryl Procell. I live across the street from the park. What I want to say is I hope there we can come to some kind of a compromise. The trees, they house our birds, they house our squirrels. We have lots of shade for the children to play. And I sit out in my backyard and I see the squirrels crossing the cable wires, moving back and forth. Right now, there are four nests in one, just one of the oak trees. So I'm hoping that somehow we can come to a compromise and save our trees and shade for our birds or the kids that are out there playing. Thank you.
I'm sure staff you've met with these people and you got an idea where we're going to go with this?
Yes, Mayor.
Do I want to get deep into it with?
Sure.
Great discussion on it with this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief recap of where we are. I did meet with Mrs. Derschka and her associates earlier today with other staff members and Council Morrison was an attendance as well. Over the weekend, I received emails from Council and phone calls from Councilmember Morrison and Councilmember Kellum about this and their sensitivity to this issue. And through those talks and emails, one, one thing that really stood out to us was something happened between when we executed this contract and today. And that is that that can help. And that is that the city code adopted an ordinance in December that allowed for some parking relief in the form of we could now administratively, administratively approve a reduction in footprint for parking for things like compact cars for certain degree amount of motorcycle spaces, using previous paving. Though all of those things can qualify to reduce some of the parking if necessary. And we didn't do this for this, this project. It was done for, you know, start code and we wanted to help to development. But through this talk, we realized, hey, we can apply this code to this project, we think. So that got our juices flowing, talking about these things and started realizing, well, maybe we can do something. And we started talking as a staff, coming up with some ideas, and we realized, yeah, this can really work. We can do something here. So in talking with Mrs. Derschka and her associates, and thank you for your time today, what we realized was there's a, there's an orderly way we can go about this. Please correct me if I mistake any, anything. The first priority would be to try to save as many oak trees as possible as hardwood canopy tree. Second to that would be the sea grapes. And third to that would be the palms. So in order of a priority, as we're saving spaces, try to look at saving, targeting those species of trees. So yes, we started looking at that and we realized there's going to be a cost. Yep. Because whatever we do, there's the design cost is going to go up because the engineers got to redesign the parking lot. But there's going to be parking spaces not built. So that's going to bring the cost down. So you got a rising cost and a decreasing cost. And at some point, they'll pass, right? At that zero mark. And what I would like to see us do is find a solution that saves the maximum number of trees in that priority closest to that zero mark as fast as possible. Because the third thing here is we don't want to slow down the project. WNJ Construction has been very gracious about this. They understand the sensitivities. Yes, they are poised to begin tree removal activities tomorrow. But I've spoken with the project managers recently, it was an hour ago, and he understands everything's on hold until he receives a call from me after this meeting. There'll probably actually be a text during this meeting saying yes or no, based on what the council wants to do. So what I would like to ask the council to do is authorize staff to utilize that particular new code section to reduce the parking spaces and save the maximum number of trees possible in that order given, Oaks first, CS and then Palms. And then execute on that as fast as possible so that design can take place, but we're not going to slow down any project across, I mean, slow down the project at all. All of that can be subject to ratification by City Council at the March meeting. And I would just ask that council consider that. If it's the will of the council that we go that way, staff is happy to oblige.
Well, consensus. That's unreasonable. They'll do the best they can.
We just.
Is not going to, you know, does not feel that it's going to be a big delay. I would say, yes, this is a good thing to implement the new parking where we can lead by example with our, basically our new code that's out there. So yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I do support that if you're looking for consensus.
There's oats by the baseball diamond that's going to stay. I know one has already been removed. Is it possible to, I don't think it's in the footprint of the building, but is it possible to look at the landscape and keep those trees as well? The ones right by the baseball.
Yeah, if, if it's council's goal to hold off on this tree removal activity, that'll give us the few days breathing room we need, then you and I can meet and talk about this. But.
Yes, my consensus is absolute.
Want to give a consensus? I did have a card for item thirteen. I wanted to mention that item has been postponed till dates certain March the sixteenth, I believe it is, or the resort rental issue.
That, that is coming up on the agenda, and that should be a council vote on that.
Just tonight?
The postpone.
Postpone, yeah. Just going to say if you, where it's probably going to be held up, but if you want to stay and wait and see, but I just want to let you know that's going to be. I'm, I can't hear you, man. Oh, I can't guarantee, but I say it's up for a vote to be postponed until next meeting. I just want to let you know, you want to sit here tonight. All right, good. It's under public participation? Sure, go ahead. Come up to the mic and your name is Penny Holiday, I guess. Okay. I just wanted to let you know, you might sit here all night for nothing.
It's been a long day, I've had a lot of fun, me too. I'm Penny Holiday. I'm a licensed community association manager, and I also have recently, well, already as a licensed realtor, I've recently assumed fifteen rentals at Cape Wind Resort. We understand exactly your intentions of what you like to pass with these ordinances. I can imagine there is a lot of trouble with some of the single family homes, people parking on the street, probably having parties, probably having too many guests stay in the home above them. I would like for you to consider several factors about what you're looking at. First of all, the requirement to background check or certify if someone is a sexual predator would put such an undue burden on our daily task of trying to ascertain whom in our guest list would actually be a sexual predator. This would, as any booking site has, it just lists how many people will be in the room. It never, no booking channel of any kind, nor my personal website or the channel manager I use, lists who will be the occupants, what are their names, what are their social security numbers, what are their addresses? I'm sure that the hotels don't go through something like this in the local area as well. It would be virtually impossible for me to ensure that I don't have a sexual predator on my premises at any given time. So consider that I have booked a room under one maid, there are four occupants, and then their president, my husband, from Orlando, is a sexual predator. So it leaves us at a, at a place where I could be caught in violation at any time by something I, I didn't even know existed. So please consider that harsh burden and responsibility it would place on all the property managers to go through this process with every single guest that they book. Another point was the, the search of records or the review of records. I certainly would have no trouble for any person coming in, search our rental records to see who we have, what, what we're doing, making sure we're doing our seven day minimum. But if you would at least consider that the owner's representative could provide that information, please remember our owners live all over the country, some live in Canada, some live in Europe. They can't personally be here to, to provide that for you. So kind of consider those two things specifically. I also want you to think of the impact. If I had to place on my website that a sexual predator must give their name in this reservation and stated that you must certify there are no sexual predators, it would be horrible for business for this community. It would be such a turn on. And I know they've seen it my time, but please consider all these factors. I know that it is probably targeted more toward the single family home, the duplex, the triplex. I'm in a large community that's been doing this for thirty years as rentals, and we try to buy back every single one of them. So please take this into consideration when you think about this in March, where we turn, and hopefully all this will be weighed in properly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Daniel, I have another card on thirteen, but we'll hear that when we get to it. Mr. Omar, hello? We'll get to that. Daniel, do you have anybody that has anything on public participation out there?
I'm checking the list right now, sir, and I do not see any right, hands raised at this time. No, no hands.
No hands. All right, we're close to public participation and come back to the, ah, yes. We'll move on with our consent agenda. You have three items before you. Does anybody have any? Oh, I'm sorry, I got the presentation. Oops, fine. Got the most important thing. Loves the children. This is a proclamation was made out to Robert Scott, was a longtime resident of the city of Cape Canaveral, future city bicycling community, a fixture, sorry, and wished to help the children of Cape Canaveral. Whereas on January the first, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Scott passed away from cancer. In his memory, a memorial ride attended by over thirty-five bicyclists was held on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, from Sherry Down Park to Dave Nedzic Drive in Fort Canaveral. There, there was an auction held and a raffle for two bicycles at Memorial, at Memorial Ride for three thousand dollars raised, which was done, which will be donated to the Florida County Sheriff's Office of the City of Cape Canaveral. Whereas Mr. Bill Skinner, the organizer of the memorial ride, has stated it was first annually event to benefit the children of Cape Canaveral. And it's going to go after that for the next several years. Therefore, our Robert Elder of Cape Canaveral, Florida County, Florida Senator, by thank you, Mr. Skinner, for your participants in the memorial ride in the state that the City of Cape Canaveral honors memorial memory of Bob Scott, signed this eleventh day of February, two thousand twenty-one. You can say a few words, clerk.
I'd just like to thank everybody. And RJ Customs, a custom bike builder in Cape Canaveral, will be continuing this ride annually to benefit the youth for Cape Canaveral. Randy and his wife, Karen, are here.
Okay, now we'll get into the audit, the most important thing of the evening. We will have a virtual meeting with Mr. Calliford from James Moore and Company. And I, oh, there he is. He's on the screen. Good evening. How you doing?
Not too bad. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Great to see everyone, albeit not in person today. It's, of course, been a crazy year, but it was good to talk with a few of you this morning, the couple of you that we didn't get to meet. As always, I'm more than glad to schedule a time even after this if there's anything that we can go through in any more detail. Big thank you as well to John DeLeo and all of his staff. This year was definitely a different year in the COVID circumstances, just working through logistics to keep everybody safe through the audit, minimizing time onsite and interaction, all that good stuff. But we are here on the usual schedule at the February meeting to discuss the annual audit for the September thirtieth, twenty twenty fiscal year. So I do want to start quickly looking back to the prior year and note that the city was awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting related to last year's CAFR. And what a CAFR or comprehensive annual financial report is, is ultimately a more comprehensive document than is required by the state in terms of what the audit requirement is. There's an additional introductory section as well as a statistical section that gives ten years of historical data, both financial and non-financial, and is really a great additional resource to the city and the citizens and you all that the finance team and a lot of non-finance folks contribute to as well to pull all of that documentation together. The CAFR will be submitted for this award again for the twenty twenty audit, and I have every expectation that this year's audit will also be awarded that certificate. So all the CAFR and the financial statements, these are the city's financial statements, ultimately management's responsibility. There are four reports that we issue in the document related to the audit performed by James Moore and Company. The first report is the audit report on the financial statements themselves, and we did issue an unmodified opinion here that these financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is the best opinion that you can see in this report and what you would want to have effectively saying that the financial statements can be relied upon. The second report that we issue is on internal control and compliance. And this is where we look at the city's internal controls over financial processes as well as compliance from a budget standpoint, brands, as well as debt. And if we had any deficiencies or non-compliance, we would have to report those in this letter. There were no such items identified on this year's audit. The third report that we issue looks at a series of items as required by the Florida Auditor General. Most of it is centered on financial condition. There's certain benchmarking and trend analyses that we have to perform. And if the city met any of those deteriorating or negative metrics, we would have to report those here. There were no such conditions met, as we'll talk about. The city continues to be in a very strong financial position. And then the fourth report that we issue, we have to look at the city's compliance with state statutes over investments and investment policies. And we did note there that the city was in compliance with those specified statutes. So to look at the numbers a little bit, first, I want to just paint the picture of what your total fund balance or reserves, when you look at your assets minus your liabilities in the general fund are as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty. It's about twelve point seven million dollars and broken into five different buckets that ultimately reflect how spendable those dollars are. So at the top, it's less spendable. The first bucket is non-spendable, a very small amount, but those relate to inventory and prepaid items where you no longer have that net asset in cash form. You've already spent the cash and therefore you can't spend it on anything else, and it gets pulled out of the fund balance analysis. The restricted fund balance here is anything that is externally restricted and can only be used for specific purposes or is required to legally be set aside. So this three hundred forty-three thousand represents your debt service sinking funds that you're required to set aside as part of those debt agreements. The committed fund balance, about six point eight million, represents largely kind of an internal restriction by either resolution or ordinance taken by the council. And what this one relates to is all but about a five hundred thousand dollar portion of that balance relates to the debt proceeds that have not yet been spent, related primarily to the multi-generational facility from the, that related debt a couple of years back. And then the assigned and unassigned buckets really represent together your unrestricted reserves. The assigned piece just means that it's effectively been earmarked through the budget process or otherwise, but those two bottom numbers are ultimately available to be spent at the city's discretion with no strings attached. So look at the combination of that assigned plus unassigned fund balance. It's about five and a half million dollars. And what we like to do, based on the GFOA, who does the CAFR review and issues the certificate related to your CAFR, they recommend that a general purpose government have no less than two months in reserves, looking at that fund balance number relative to your annual budget. They also generally say that if you're a coastal community, that bare minimum number should probably be a little bit higher, closer to three months or twenty-five percent. So as you can see here, that percentage went up about nine percent from the prior year to thirty-eight unchanged to just under fifty at forty-seven point two percent. So overall, I think it's, it's a very strong position. I always am one to say, remember, when you see these minimum recommendations, minimum recommendations, it's an absolute minimum when you factor in the risk of hurricanes. And if we were ever to take any sort of a direct hit after we've been lucky the last few years with Matthew and Irma, some of those reserves would get dipped into pretty quickly if there was any major expenses related to those. And then ultimately, to get those dollars back from FEMA, we've seen other cities where it takes two, three years and some where they're still waiting on multiple millions of dollars in reimbursements from the federal government. The other factor, looking at reserves, is COVID nineteen. We always say reserves are a what if for the unknown, the rainy day fund. And COVID nineteen was really the, the ultimate unforeseen scenario. If we go back about nine months, when you all were starting the budget process, there were lots of questions over what are revenues going to do? What are property values going to do? And there was a, a lot of fear, I'm sure, for John and his team as they were coming up with the numbers to say, well, what revenue numbers make sense? How, how much of a hit might we? How, how much of a hit might we see if there's an extended shutdown of the economy across the state, because lots of those dollars that the city relies upon are based on sales taxes and other dollars that funnel through the state and then get remitted back to the city, so the good news is while there was a hit, those revenues weren't down really nearly anywhere uh, like some of us feared, and so far this year, uh, they're down a little bit, but again, not enough to create a significant hardship or issue as far as it's looked so far, so hopefully we continue uh, on a strong path, but the city is again in a very strong position as we uh, continue to go forward and hopefully reach the uh, the tail end of this pandemic. So look at the, one of the other major funds uh for the city, of course, is the CRA fund. Um, here, your total fund balance is about $27,000, that's very normal because reserves aren't really an issue for the CRA. Uh, the CRA is all about reinvesting into that district of the city. Uh, and in recent years, the city, of course, has been very active in aggressing and um investing those dollars aggressively uh, into the CRA area, and those revenues you can see there over the past three years have continued to increase uh, at a pretty good clip since the CRA was established. Uh, this year, about $264,000 was spent on additional capital improvements. And then a little under a million dollars related to debt service payments that were transferred out of the CRA uh, to repay that related debt that funded some of the early improvements in the CRA. Uh, one side note, the, the CAFR document that we have just as in prior years uh, is generally the same format and structure, but one additional requirement this year was the CRA had to have a separate audit performed. Uh, this was as a result of a new state statute passed about a year and a half ago. Uh, and in looking at that, we did have to perform additional compliance testing over the CRA and the use of those funds. Uh, so ultimately here, that separate report had a series of clean audit reports and did note that the CRA was in compliance with those specified statutes over the use of those dollars. Uh, and that will continue to be an ongoing requirement for that separate audit report uh, to be uh sent to the state every year going forward. Uh, so with that, that covers most of my comments, as always, I'm more than glad to answer any questions that any of you all may have.
I, I don't really have any questions, everything looks good, John's team did a great job and through the crazy COVID shutdown and all that, looks really good, I don't have any questions right now.
I know, I met with Zach earlier today, and I'd like to congratulate him and his staff, and also our staff, John and our staff. Thank you very much, I think that we have a watchdog group looking at every penny spent. And uh, I'd like to thank you very much for that, I think that we continue to move forward. And I think that's what we want for our city, we have a beautiful city here, and I think we will be proud in the future, thank you. Proud now, too.
Hey, you, sorry, you might have men- mentioned it, John, how much money is still owed from FEMA to the city, I don't know where that was captured?
Uh, well, for the county, they owe us uh, they owe us about $35,000 um for the, the COVID part, uh, they paid us for all our materials about uh, about $32,000. It was allowed, uh, so we're, we're paid there, as far as we're fortunate, of course, I could go back in history and say when we waited for our money for Matthew, it took two years. Um, after that, our claims weren't as big, and that's good, because we don't want the city to get hit by a hurricane, and, but we've gotten every penny back now from every past hurricane, everything that we expected. COVID, like I said, um, we called the county last week and, because they were calling us to get our claim in, and we did. So then we called them back and said, you know, how's it going on our claim? So, we're waiting on an answer from the county. So, we, we should be getting the money, I, I hope within the next six months, I would hope.
Just wanna congratulate you every year, I know, I don't know how many of this is in a row, but you continue to do a great job and lead that team, and hats off to Todd and your entire administration, finance department shows up here and does awesome. Uh, one of the things Zach kinda was chatting to me about on the, on the presentation is, you know, a city being able to um, on the coast, dealing with hurricanes more frequently than other cities is challenging enough. And, and then throw COVID in with it, the two Cs, I guess you could say, and uh we've been able to overcome, so thank you so much.
I would just like to personally thank my staff, uh, this year Jenny, Cheryl, and Candace, extraordinary job. In the midst of getting all this done, this, you know, the residents, we, we did a software conversion remotely with a company out of Michigan uh at the same time. And to make sure all the data was transferred from one software system to another, extraordinary efforts by my finance staff and a good supporting staff from the, the city staff also, so I mean, uh, the city's blessed, and I, and I would just say that, uh, what's that?
We have a picture of all that.
Oh, yes. And, and I would say this, you know, I would say this, Wes, and thanks for his comments, the uh you know, the audit has no write-ups, and that's, that's extraordinary, but we could never take this for granted. Uh, we can never let our guard down, and that's the reason why we have good audits, so, and great budgets. So, we'll continue doing it, we love doing it, and um, like to see COVID go away. But we'll do whatever we have to do to get the job done, and um, it's just been a pleasure serving you and serving our city manager, Todd, who's just extraordinary support, extraordinary support.
And I think John's being humble, because a lot of credit goes to his excellent financial leadership and stewardship, thank you, John.
Thank you.
And just.
I think it's been, it's been a, a great whatever, eight years, seven years, eight years you've been with us, and uh we have gotten the CAFR uh, every year with a, with a fund balance that's unbelievable. Uh, this year, for instance, I, I noted a couple of things, we we wind up like a 1.7 million dollars net gain, and we get the lowest taxes in the county almost, and we're moving forward with all of our our buildings and all of our projects that we've got. Uh, it, it is all due to the, to the staff, it's not us up here, it's staff that does all that. I, I'm applaud, uh, I'm applauded, but it's every year, it's just like we, we wind up with, like just a, a good balance every year, it's been every year for the last good eight years. John, I think it's, it's due to your, your staff and your group of people and all of our staff, that's who we gotta give their credit to. And I have an applause too, and uh, Zach, you guys always do a great job for us, you've been 15 years or so with us, whatever it's been, doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Always a pleasure to work with you all.
And, and I don't wanna go away without saying that, by the way, James Morse, James Morse's support is incredible, I could call this guy, he'll be on the highway. And I'll get a call back in five minutes, I mean, that's, that's our audience, that's the auditor team, yeah, this guy's son. His team is incredible, too, the support he gives the city, we, we're getting every, we're getting our money's worth, so.
Been great, ever since I've been.
Thank you, Zach.
Zach, again, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good meeting with you today, sir.
Thank you all, you're welcome.
I'm sorry? Hey Zach, good evening to you. Daniel, do you have anybody out there who would like to say anything on our budget, or, or CAFR, I mean, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, no hands raised at this time, sir.
Okay, then we'll close, close it out and move forward, thanks again, staff, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go on to the consent agenda? We have three items on there, does anybody care to remove any one of the three items? If not, we'll look for more.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to um, remove uh, number three for discussion.
Number three?
Wes?
I, I don't think there's any more to remove, I, I just have one comment on number two, I just want to thank the, the staff for the, for the people who are listening in, resolution number 202103 is banning the use of herbicides containing life estate on city-owned or managed properties. Um, one of the things that Zach said in his presentation that stood out to me is this is, the city is doing this, this isn't something that's gonna be um, put on private property owners and leading by example. And uh, I think this is a step in the right direction, and I'm, I'm excited to, to pass this, and if that's what the council wants to do, and Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for a motion, I'm happy to.
Looking for a motion for one and two?
Yes, sir, I move to pass items number one and two on the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion, uh, second to pass items one and two on the consent agenda, hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Cullen?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, Ms. Cullen, your item number three.
Uh, yes, I just have a couple of questions, um, on page seven of 24, and um it talks about the selection committee and city council should consider the following criteria. Um, you know, I see all the, the contract and, and the, what, what was needed for the for them to submit their, but, but I don't see anything on the performance history of this franchise. And I'm worried, kind of worried about background checks for the, for these people. And then, you know, the qualifications, um, and then, you know, like subcontractors. How are we gonna enforce that, that there won't be some guy out there, you know, teaching kids that we don't? I mean, how do we, I'm, you know, this is the first franchise contract that I've been through, and I just have these questions. You know, the city permits a maximum ratio of five students per one instructor, how is that enforced? And temporary shelters on the beach, um, how is that enforced? Um, the environmental impacts, the effects of the proposed franchise would have on public safety?
If you will, direct what questions you have to Gustavo, he's there.
I'm just, some basic questions on how this comes apart and uh come together, and, you know all these, this criteria that we're supposed to go by to, to uh vote on this. You know, do we have a performance history of these people? This surf.
Uh, yeah, as far as the performance history, I contacted the people, he doesn't now. So he does it at the Cocoa Beach Pier, he's this whole contractor there. And he also does it for Westgate Resorts, so I called both and confirmed and said very legitimate business, they've never had a single issue related to business with them. Uh, so, and, and when you're talking about a selection committee, by the way, that would be if we had received more than one proposal.
Right.
Only got one, then he met all the requirements, uh, so there was no need for a selection committee. As far as the background, we do an FDLE check on the owner. And these are free checks, uh, so we didn't have to pay for any of it, where, you know, runs through his criminal history and everything came back clean. Uh, so he's, this gentleman in particular, and his business is about there, there's only a handful of real legitimate surf schools, businesses like that, in the Florida County period, and he's about the biggest one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, and you said like the um how are, you know, if he has more than five students per, uh, one instructor?
Right, so that is something we've been on, where his own ratios are wonderful.
Oh, okay.
So he keeps it even better, honestly, if anybody gets hurt or dies under his while he's doing business, he would be doing it, so, it's in his best, best interest to keep those, those numbers down.
Okay.
Uh, but when I asked him specifically about that, because another council member uh called me about that, he confirmed he only does one for, that's his ratio.
Okay, um, and then my last question is, um it's so, that franchise means that he has, like, if somebody, if I wanted to teach my kids to surf?
Right.
I would contact him, if I, if there was somebody else that wanted to come in to just teach my kids, they couldn't do that, because how does that work?
Commercially, they could, right, so if you have a cousin that wants to teach something, I mean, that happens at the beach every day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, people teach each other all the time.
Right.
But um, if you wanted to call X Y C Surf School, if they showed up at a Cape Canaveral beach to teach, they couldn't, because we have a franchise agreement with this person, and I'll give you just a brief history. Code enforcement caught a school doing that out there with a bunch of kids. They went and addressed them, and they said, hey, there's a process that you guys want to do, this, the person at the time had an Orlando surf school. And I said, okay, I'll spend the two months going through the process to make it legitimate, you don't need to be, uh, you know, going against city code.
Right.
They didn't apply, only this gentleman applied, but he saw the RFP. Uh, so, you know, luckily for us, he's a local guy, and he has a very legitimate business, but that, that's how this particular franchise agreement came to be. The last one was from an ex-resident, that's how my history with the franchise agreement was. A local uh resident wanted to do it, and again, in order to do something commercial on the beach, like sell ice cream, right, and we came up with that franchise agreement. This gentleman, when I started here years ago, wanted to teach surf school, that's when we brought that in. At the same time, David Lane was starting his business, and he wanted to rent kayaks, so we opened that franchise opportunity as well, he's been there
Oh, I like that.
An entrepreneur, so, in order to conduct commercial business on city property, there has to be a, a mechanism, as far as council allows things like to happen, right, I don't know that you necessarily want, you know, a ton of beach umbrellas and chairs out there, I'm, I'm not sure if you do or not, but that, you know, so, I, I think counts, every time businesses request things like that, then a staff will have to figure out a way to, to facilitate that, and it's up to you, council, to say, well, we do want that or we don't.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you, Mr. Cullen.
Gustavo, when you were talking about it, is this, this is not a one-person show, because you said that the FDLE check will be done, and you said referred to the owner. What about whoever he has working under his?
Yeah, um, and that's, that's again, that's something that we can require anytime uh, to have licenses of these people and driver's licenses, things like that, you know, because, like I said, he's already running it at the Cocoa Beach Pier. And so, uh, the, the main reason he applied for our franchise is just because it was there as an opportunity. If he has a big group, I'll just give you an example, this is what he said, he'll take his group to the pier A, because that's where all his stuff is at, because we don't allow him to bring a trailer, we don't allow him to store it. You know, we, we didn't make this, uh, we made it pretty restrictive, and by we, I mean you, because but uh, you know, it, it's obviously meant for a very small operation. Uh, but I'll definitely bring up, you know, background screening these people, because we wanna make sure if he's gonna have a camp in the city, he'll let us know, and uh, we can easily do that with a driver's license.
And do you, you'll get a list of the people that will be working, so he can just call somebody?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Well, that'd be something that you're gonna offer down the road with summer camp, would that be like a surf day?
Yeah, we could partner, um, so, because this year, I'll be honest with you, COVID is, we had to cancel camp last year.
Right.
And, and because we don't have a facility, because that building across the street is just not, you know. Uh, we may not have a normal summer camp this year. So we are working with Little League, we're working with our soccer club, we're working, uh, we could work with this guy as well about providing uh, uh, more like a niche camps, right, so we do like a one-week summer uh, summer, we do a one-week baseball, and you're right, maybe we could partner with him to do something, you know, obviously here's a little, I know about the big picture of those camps, it's actually pretty expensive. And as you know, Cape U, eighty some percent for reduced launch.
Right.
But there might be some partnership where he gives residents, young residents, a big discount to participate in the camp, I'll look into that for sure.
And that's all I have.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, thank you. All right, uh, Nikki?
Yeah, I'm just, I just, you know, concerned about the safety of the kids out there, and just concerned about the safety of the kids, and I think requiring the background check and licenses.
That's all.
You're good, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, we heard it. We can get a motion for number three?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass item number three, award contract for commercial surf school franchise.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass item number three. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Mayor, before we move on to the, uh, public hearings, want to take you back to the acceptance of the annual audit and financial statements. We are looking for, um, the council acceptance by motion and a vote for that item, please.
Okay, uh, we need a vote to accept the audit as presented to us by Zach Caulfield and James Morton.
I'll move to accept the audit for 2020.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the audit and a second to that motion. Hold the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're moving to our public hearings. Item number four, ordinance number 0121, adopting the city initiative rezoning of several government properties. Second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Okay, items, uh, four through 11 are second, second and final readings of various rezoning ordinances and comprehensive plan ordinances. Um, the properties that are at issue are identified on the parcel reference map, which is just before item number four in your agenda package and is now up on the screen. Um, I just want to emphasize again that, um, all of the parcels are owned by local governments in the city of Cape Canaveral. The properties include properties owned by the school board, um, the, um, the county, the port, and the city of Cape Canaveral itself. So each one of those are governmentally owned properties. So the first ordinance, uh, tonight is ordinance zero-one dash twenty-twenty-one, an, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city initiative rezoning of several government-owned properties owned respectively either by the city of Cape Canaveral or the Canaveral Port Authority, related to lands with current future land use map classification of conservation and currently being used by said governmental entities as conservation in public or recreation uses within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Cape Canaveral, specifically changing the zoning map designation of the properties generally referred to as Banana River Park, the northern portion of Manatee Sanctuary Park, and a portion of Canaveral Port Authority property located within the northwest portion of the city along Banana River, from their respective current city zoning designations to the city conservation zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance, or more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, provided for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and an effective date. Again, this is second and final reading in a public hearing. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, we had this last month and it's all on the screen, but it entails all the government-owned properties within the city. Anybody have anything they want to add or?
No comments for me, Mr. Mayor.
Look for a motion to pass it.
I'll go one.
I'm sorry. Yes, uh, I don't have any cards on these items, other than the last item, which is Omar, I think he might have left. Anyway, um, sorry about that. Daniel?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Counsel, closed public hearing.
If there's no further comments, I move that we pass ordinance number oh-one twenty-twenty-one.
I second it.
I have a motion to pass ordinance four-one twenty-twenty-one by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Hey, item number six is ordinance oh-three twenty-twenty-one.
Number five.
Small-scale future land use.
Uh, the next, next item is, yep, it's item number five, ordinance number zero-two-dash twenty-twenty-one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city-initiated rezoning of several government-owned properties owned respectively by either the city of Cape Canaveral of our county or the Puffaro County School District, related to lands with current future land use map classification of public recreation and currently being used by said government entities as either public or recreation uses within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Cape Canaveral, specifically changing the zoning map designation of the properties generally referred to as the old city hall complex and sheriff's office, city recreation center, city library, wastewater reclamation facility, Capeview Elementary, Cherry Down Park, Canaveral City Park, southern portion of Manatee Sanctuary Park, and city properties located at 200 Long Point Road Patriot Park, from their respective current city zoning designations to the city public recreation zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance, or more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, provided for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and an effective date. Again, this is second and final reading and a public hearing, uh, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, sir. Counsel?
Questions?
Anybody got any questions?
No, sir.
Seems to be, uh, our parts. I don't have anything to add to it. Anybody out there want to talk about this? I don't have any cards. Come to the phone, microphone, please, so, and state your name.
I'm Virginia Dersh, and I was curious why, why the zoning's being changed.
Wait, uh, well, let me let the zoning director explain to you.
I can just address that very simply. There, the, the properties are currently being used a certain way. Their existing use is inconsistent with, um, the city zoning designation, so what the city's trying to do here, council's trying to do is put the appropriate zoning district designation of the properties to match the existing use.
Get off of that.
Yeah, as an example, um, well, as an example, this city hall is pre-zoned, and obviously this isn't a commercial operation, uh, so we're going to be, that's in a subsequent ordinance, but, uh, that's just an example of what Mr. Garganese is talking about, just bring everything into alignment and consistency.
Part of this zoning here was residential, that's this building setting, so we're big deal, all.
The ones that we just had, I mean, for example, another more obvious example is the profit, some of the properties we're talking about in some of the previous ordinance are used for conservation purposes. So we're putting a conservation zoning designation on top of those properties to match the conservation use. And then other properties like Cherry Down Park is a park, so it's getting the public recreation zoning designation to match the use of the park.
The staff has been working on this since 2019, so about two years, and working very hard on this. This, as you can see, is very detailed and expensive, but something that was necessary. Thank you.
Daniel? Item number five?
No, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, closed public hearing. Come back to the council, look for a motion.
Uh, I'll move to approve ordinance number zero-two twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Kellum. For ordinance number oh-two twenty-twenty-one, would you hold the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, now we move to item number six.
Item number six, ordinance number zero-three-dash twenty-twenty-one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of approximately eight-point-six-four acres of real property owned by the Canaveral Port Authority, currently being used and commonly known as the southern portion of Jetty Park, and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, from R-three residential to public recreation, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this. Ordinance also a public hearing item, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, counsel? Comment? Comment?
No.
Public participation, yeah. Anybody want to say anything on this one? Daniel?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Over, closed public participation. And come back to council, but it for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance oh-three twenty-twenty-one as written.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morrison, I mean by Councilmember Brown, and a second by Mr. Morrison for ordinance number oh-three twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Thanks, this is item number seven, is ordinance oh-four twenty-twenty-one, adopting the city initiated rezoning.
All right, ordinance number zero-four-dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city-initiated rezoning of approximately eight-point-six-four acres of real property owned by the Canaveral Port Authority, currently being used and commonly known as the southern portion of Jetty Park, from the current city zoning designation to the city public recreation zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance, is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and a conditional effective date. So this is second and final reading of this ordinance in a public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, comments?
No, sir.
No comment? Go to public. Daniel?
No, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, counsel, come back to us, look for a motion for item number eight, ordinance number oh-four twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt ordinance oh-four twenty-twenty-one on the second reading.
I second it.
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilmember Kellum and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to pass ordinance number oh-four twenty-twenty-one. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Hey, item number eight, ordinance oh-five twenty-twenty-one, adopting the small-scale future land use. Mr. Garganese, second reading.
Ordinance number zero-five-dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use designation of property owned by the city of Cape Canaveral and generally known as Long Point Park, approximately seven-point-eight-eight acres, more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, from a split of R-one residential and conservation to entirely conservation, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. This is second and final reading and a public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Please, sir. Counsel, back to us, this is Long Point Park, basically. Any comments?
No, sir.
There are no comments, we'll go to public hearing. Daniel?
No, sir, no hands raised at this time.
No hands on ordinance number oh-five twenty-twenty-one, back to us, closed public hearing. Look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance number oh-five twenty-twenty-one.
I second it.
Yeah, I have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to pass ordinance oh-five twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we'll go to ordinance, number, number, item number nine, ordinance number oh-six twenty-twenty-one, adopting the city initiated rezoning.
All right, we're on seven.
Sorry.
Seven.
Reading number seven.
It's ordinance, yeah, right, it's ordinance number zero-six-dash twenty-twenty-one. I think it's item number nine.
We just did nine. All right, I'm sorry, we just did eight. My book, tab out of place, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
We're at item number nine. Okay.
Yep.
Oh-six twenty-twenty-one.
Yep, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city-initiated rezoning of approximately seven-point-eight-eight acres of real property owned by the city of Cape Canaveral, currently being used as conservation, and commonly known as Long Point Park, from the current city zoning designation to the city R-one residential to conservation zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and a conditional effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance and a public hearing item, Mayor.
Okay, counsel? Ordinance number oh-six twenty-twenty-one, do you? Any comments?
My only comment is Anthony is getting really good at reading. He's like, you have a fear of auctioneering or those fast radios.
I just got to keep the right tab up here.
No comment.
Order number zero-six-dash twenty-one, go on once, go on twice. Sold.
Oh, boy. Okay.
No, I'm good. Thank you, Jay.
Anything to add to it? Go to public hearing. Dancel? Daniel?
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Look for a motion for oh-six twenty-twenty-one, counsel.
I'll make the motion that we adopt number oh-six twenty-twenty-one at the second reading.
Second by Mr. Brown. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Kellum and a second by Councilmember Brown for ordinance number oh-six twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Did we get this right? Ordinance number oh-seven twenty-twenty-one, item number ten, adopting a small-scale future land use. Mr. Garganese.
Ordinance number zero-seven-dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of several properties owned by the city of Cape Canaveral and generally known as the city hall complex, four parcels totaling approximately one-point-one-six acres, city fire station approximately point-five-eight acres, three-hundred Washington Avenue, Bennix Park approximately point-six-one acres, and eighty-eight-twenty North Atlantic Avenue, Wagner Park approximately point-two-two acres, and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, from C-one commercial or R-two residential to public recreation, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. This is second and final reading and a public hearing item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel?
No comments.
Uh, no, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Any audience? Okay, we're closed public hearing and come back to the council for a motion on ordinance oh-seven twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance for, yeah, accept ordinance number seven twenty-twenty-one on the second reading.
Can I second it?
I have a motion by this Councilmember Kellum and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to pass ordinance oh-seven twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, on item number 11, ordinance number 08-2021.
Ordinance 08-2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting the city-initiated rezoning of several government-owned properties owned by the City of Cape Canaveral, and currently being used as either public or recreational uses within the jurisdictional limits of the City of Cape Canaveral, specifically changing the zoning map designation of the properties generally referred to as City Hall Complex, city fire station, and city properties located at 300 Washington Avenue, Bennix Park, and 8820 North Atlantic Avenue, Wagner Park, from their respective current city zoning designations to the city public recreation zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance and more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and a conditional effective date. This is two, the second and final reading and a public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, comments?
No comments.
Comment? Public? No comments. Daniel?
No, sir, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close public hearing, come back to the counsel, look for a motion for ordinance 08-2021.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 08-2021.
Here we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, and a second by Councilmember Brown to pass ordinance 08-2021. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Hey, item number 12, ordinance 09-2021, amending the chapter 78, article 2, Mr. Garganese.
Hey, uh, ordinance 09-2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending chapter 78, article 2, sanitary sewer system related to the administrative enforcement of the provisions stated therein, providing for the clarification of applicable penalties, providing for the use of a special magistrate for administrative proceedings involving violations by industrial and commercial users of the city sewer system, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, separability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing item. Uh, there have not been any changes to this ordinance since first reading of this housekeeping ordinance. Uh, be happy to answer any question, additional questions the council may have. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel? Comments? Morrison, nothing?
No, sir.
Any comments? Public, nothing? Daniel? Item 13? Any?
No, no hands raised at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you, closed public hearing, and we'll come back to the dais. Motion?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 09-2021 on the second reading.
I second it.
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilmember Kellum, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to pass ordinance 09-2021. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, item number 13. This is, uh, ordinance number 10-21, amending the section of 486 for the city code regulating se- vacation rentals. Second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Um, there's, there's a request that, uh, this item regarding vacation rentals, ordinance 10-2021, be postponed until the next regular city council meeting in March. Um, and that, at that time, this ordinance would be, uh, would be taken up for consideration.
Mr. Mayor? I add just one thing to what Mr. Garganese had to say. Yeah, as, as you recall, the council directed the plan, asked the planning and zoning board to, uh, provide feedback. They had a very good dialogue, good discussion on the items. Um, they just were unable to come to, uh, uh, a, uh, a point where they felt comfortable in providing the recommendation. I think that they will, they were very close, but they just needed a little more time. And, uh, um, I think you will, the council will have their recommendation at your next meeting, thank you.
And Mayor, if I could add, um, because we have already advertised this ordinance in order to preserve that advertisement, we would need to postpone to a date certain of the March council meeting. If that's council's wishes.
Yes, I, I wanted to bring up something about this. Um, I had, uh, over on Friday requested a special meeting, um, that we could meet with the citizens, um, on March 3rd to talk about this, and also how home rule is being preempted by the legislature, and how it affects the, um, vacation rentals, among other things. Um, and I, I requested on Friday, and I didn't get a consensus. So I'm asking now if, oh, I can get a consensus for a workshop meeting on March 3rd at 6:00 to talk to the citizens, to, um, promote communication, um, you know, exchange ideas. I think it would help, maybe help with the planning and zoning board and their decisions to hear more of what the people have to say. So I'm asking the consensus to agree to a workshop meeting on the 3rd, hear with the citizens. Um, I would like to get some input by the Florida League of Cities and their information on how they can, uh, you know, educate the citizens on what's happening, um, in the Florida legislature. So I need a consensus, uh, for a meeting.
My take on this, Mickey would be, if you're gonna have a gathering of people to discuss this, they can put it against. And, and tell those people, those are the people that we possibly put in place to do this type, not us.
Right.
For those citizens to tell those people, their own citizenry, what they want and...
Well, I just, I think...
That's what I would suggest, because I, I don't want to workshop something that is before PNC, as a council member, I don't.
Well, I, but my point is just getting more information from the people.
They can go to the PNC meeting, they can get them.
And, and I think it's our responsibility to educate the people on where we stand and where the Florida League of Cities is trying to help us with all these, uh, you know, the home rule.
If you, if you, if you want to tell the people in a public meeting where you stand as a council member, you're telling your PNC already what you're gonna do without their input. So that's my, my take, uh, I don't want to do a workshop.
I always, I thought the PNC could come, too. And, and this is gonna be after the PNC meeting.
You're still circumventing your board doing that.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point a clarity. Um, I think that you said March 3rd.
Right.
The PNC board meeting is...
February 27th.
Thank you.
The 24th.
So the, so the, the PNC, in the order, the PNC board meeting would be next.
Right.
Then you're proposing a workshop, then we would have our council meeting.
Exact.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any...
But I'm saying if you want to get the public's input to where it belongs, it needs to go to PNC. If they can't get through to PNC, then it's, you know, you're gonna have your hearing after that.
If you're looking for an oper, you know, PNC board meeting's definitely gonna happen, that's a great time to get their take, and then after they, we will have their recommendation at that point. And I, and I think that is a, a good opportunity to connect and listen to the citizens, because, um, you know, that's the moment before the vote, and so, you know, in the PNC board meeting, you, you know, that's, that chair's agenda, and, and the format of that meeting is to take up the business there. Um, and so if you're looking for just give the citizens a one-on-one opportunity with the people they elected, I, I'm, if that date doesn't work, I, I just checked, I'm fine with that. Um, I'm more than happy to, anytime any council member wants a workshop, count me in today, and, and I'll, I'll, uh, do my best to be there.
I have a prior engagement, I'm getting the second, uh, vaccine that night at 7:00, so that's the reason why I couldn't possibly make it. Uh, the problem with some of this is the PNC is the advisory council, and we don't want to be disrespectful to that body, and I think that they're doing their due diligence, especially, they had a long meeting last time, and now this next meeting. So I think as a matter of respect, we need to wait on them, and then the appropriate time would be for residents to go to PNC, and we may listen at home or be at the meeting also, and if we're at the meeting, residents can speak to us there at the PNC meeting.
I think that's a, an idea, but it's not any, I keep hearing, there's no intervention, PNC's gonna be, begin and end their meeting. That, that meeting's gonna happen, and then the moment before, I mean, when I think of a workshop, I think an open invite, you know, the agenda's pretty loose, one subject, we talk about it, um, you know, it's not necessarily behind the dais, but, but it's more of an informal meeting to where we can, you know, circle up and, and work through the issues after the PNC board has met. I mean, taking, if I was a citizen, and I think that this is, obviously, a lot of residents are passionate about this, I think they'll end up going to the PNC board meeting, which is kind of a binding, a non-binding recommendation, but it, it makes sense to me, and let me, um, Councilmember Kellum, if the March 3rd meeting, you know, ends up being an issue, um, with me before I check with the wife, things like that, um, is there another backup date? Is it council, or, uh, their council members might have something?
Um, I think we could, I, I mean, we're flexible on that date, I, I just was hoping to do it before we, before we meet, after the PNC board meets, and before we meet, so it would be one more opportunity to hear from the people on this important issue, and, you know, it's, and help them understand that sometimes our hands are tied by the state legislature. And I, a lot of people that I've talked to don't understand that and don't understand home rule, so I thought that would be a good opportunity to, you know, go over that, and plus, you know, here, for the last time, before we make a decision, what they have to say, and, you know, maybe some people have an opinion and can't make the planning and zoning board, and this would be one more meeting for them to express what they have to say, and to show that the council did their due diligence to get everybody's input before we make a, a decision. That was my thoughts.
So, March 2nd, or 3rd, or 4th, would work for anytime that week, I'd go it.
Right, I just wanted to try to do it as early as possible, so then, you know, if we take in the information, we have time to think about it, go over it in our own heads, um, you know, try to get the information to the people on, like I said, the home rule and how, it's not just that subject, it's other things that are coming up that people aren't aware of, and, you know, I would like to give them the, um, you know, the committees that are engaging in this and the legislature, and their phone numbers so they can call them, you know, I just want to get information to people, and I think I...
Different agenda. Um, I, yes, I, I'll be there, and if we lock this in, I will promote it hard and make it worthwhile for the, for us to be here.
Last night, last night, Tony Ortiz, who is the new president of Florida League of Cities, uh, spoke at Space Coast League of Cities Board, and I'm on that board, and he has come up with this City Strong, Florida City Strong campaign, and each time we have a new president, they come up with a different theme, and his is Cities, Florida Cities Strong, and there is a video, and it is rather a civics lesson, and I talked to Todd, our city manager today, about this, and I think that this would be a good thing for all of us to participate in, and, uh, it's well done and well organized, and it is a video, so I think that this might be a good time for that, and then, uh, it explains exactly what Mickey is talking about, the home rule, and this is very much to do with vacation rentals, and no matter what we do, we may be preempted by the state, March 15th through 19th, that's the legislature meeting, even though we have been advocating, and this is like the number one priority for Space Coast League of Cities, to try to hold on to our home rule for this, this big issue, it's, um, House Bill 219, and part of the City Strong campaign that Tony, Tony Ortiz is pushing is to educate residents on how to call different representatives in the House and the Senate of the state, and with all the telephone numbers listed and everything, and, um, to just voice, to say, I'm against having all of these vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods, or maybe you're for, but whatever your opinion is, and I think the more we speak, the better it is, and they want telephone calls, not emails, for some reason, the emails have not been very effective, and Dominic Montanaro in Saddle White Beach, this has been his life's passion, it seems, he's been going back and forth to Tallahassee, I think he went about 10 times last year between December and April, so, anyway, um, I do like the idea of doing some type of workshop with Florida Cities Strong to, to, I think we can all use a review about civics and how our government works, I think that there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about when we get our agenda one week ahead of time, and then the procedure is, that's the time that we spend with the staff by telephoning or coming in to ask questions about a particular agenda item, and that's when it's clarified, and then when we have the business meeting here, we already know the answers to the questions we've had, and, uh, that's to facilitate the meeting. Thank you.
Yep, Angela, you said the legislature's supposed to, supposed to meet on the 15th?
Excuse me, the 15th through the 19th this year, March 15th through the 19th.
So our, my recommendation would be, if it's the 15th, and we'd have that information, why not, uh, meet early, um, prior to our, our council meeting, because a lot of this might be a mute point if the legislature's, um, rule, and all this stuff that we want to go ahead and enact, or not enact, it's, it'd be, um, essentially, wouldn't be any good, or wouldn't be, you know, we've wasted a lot of time, and we don't know how they're gonna vote.
If they meet on the 15th, that would be, the next day would be...
I don't think they're going to vote on the 15th, I think there's a committee that starts meeting on the 15th to the 19th to talk about short-term rentals.
The committee's already met, the committee's already met, and they're leaning toward opposite of what some of us, you know...
I just, I think that...
At this point, they've already met several times.
Well, I, if, Mr. Mayor, I think if the goal is to mobilize citizens here in Cape Canaveral to reach out to their legislature and their representatives, that, to, to, uh, Councilmember Brown's point, we know that when that, if, a lot of bills, we think this one's gonna get, get through to the floor and, and to vote, is to give our citizens enough time to take advantage of those tools like you're talking about, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, City Strong, and, you know, really bring everyone together here, you know, with maybe 10, 15 days to reach out to those representatives and try to hedge against what, uh, Councilmember Brown's talking about, because I agree, there, it'd be a lot of wasted work and time, but we will give ourselves the best probability for success, and we can say, hey, we, we work with our citizens to, to mobilize, and, you know, maybe in that workshop, we set a goal, you know, we watch City Strong meeting, uh, kick it off, we have a talk, what's important in those is to listen to the residents, what their concerns are, and then, you know, say, give them a, you know, a call to action where they can leave and have the tools and the resources that they need to reach out to Representative Saroy, Senator Tom Wright, and all those folks who are gonna be voting, and then, you know, we roll into our meeting, and I think, um, kind of two things are happening here, we got the, the vote up at the state, and then we got our vote, and one of them, um, I think the one voted the state is more important.
The other tool, the other tool that came up, excuse me, um, the other tool that came up last night for advocacy is to text HomeRule50457, and then you will get the alerts on which bill is coming up, and then you can also then call or text or email, but I think the call is what they're saying is most effective, so I just wanted to tell you that, too. Thank you.
One thing I'd say, a lot of the things that we would like to propose or not propose, I mean, it, like I said, it could be a mute point if they need to say, hey, we decided this is the way it's gonna be done, regardless of how the city, what the city decides. And we've got our citizens all, you know, all up in a ire because of what they wanna do, then all of a sudden it comes down that they, they never had any input anyway in what was gonna be decided, or what was gonna be. But like the main point is contact your legislators, let them know how you feel on this, on this topic.
So, I just think that any, our opportunity to engage with citizens is important. And I think we, you know, from the tree issue, the more we talk to the community, the better off we are. And, I mean, if we, if we meet on the 3rd, and the, and they, between the 3rd and the 15th, when they start voting on this, if we can give the information to the citizens, we have done our due diligence to do the best we can for our people. And anytime we can meet with them, you know, to have their input, give them information, tell them how it works, is important. You know, and, and if it all, in the end, we get preempted again, we tried, we did our best, we reached out to the community. And what's wrong with that?
I'm, I'm ready for that. If there's another date that works for Mayor Pro Tem Raymond, I'll make that work, too. And obviously, the rest of the council, willing and able, I know there are two, but I think I, I'll be there.
My suggestion would be that even if it's after our council meeting, that we go ahead and see what the legislators are gonna, how they voted, or, I think the window is, what, the 16th, 15th, or the 19th? And of course, we have an obligation, I agree, to let our citizens know. And this doesn't prevent our citizens to reach out to us, and I'm pretty sure all of us know. A good point was, was Jenny, what she did as far as the trees. She reached out to the community, and you reached out to your council people, I think the same way that we need to be known, or through our community, that we are taking account the city's recommendation, or our citizens' recommendation, what they wanna do. I've contacted prior to this meeting, uh, from citizens about, they thought we were gonna go ahead and move forward on this. But, yeah, I think by us not, we don't have to, our citizens will be contacting us, and we can still get out to them without having a meeting prior to the 15th.
And what, when is our strategic planning? That's in the month of March also. What date is that?
March 31st.
March 31st?
So, I don't know.
Well, we have the, the Planning and Zoning Board coming up a week from tomorrow. I think we're all gonna be paying attention to that. We'll be getting a recommendation from that. And we do wanna encourage public participation at that Planning and Zoning Board, absolutely. And I think, after that night, I think we'll all be better educated on whether or not we need to hold a workshop meeting, there are more voices, more opinions that haven't been heard, or maybe that's just such an overwhelming success of, of people showing up at that meeting, that we feel like, gosh, we think we've got it all. So maybe a solution is to make this, have this discussion or this decision after the Planning and Zoning Board meeting next Wednesday. So perhaps on Thursday, Mickey, you might make the request a week from this Thursday, and see where we are in the, in the interim. As council members, we should go ahead and get the citizens to attend this meeting to go ahead.
Well, I've done that. I directed, as Anthony told me, to shepherd the people to the planning and zoning. I did that, and a lot of people said, well, I can't make it that night. And, but I need to, you know, to speak up, and I need to have a, and that's why I thought, why can't we just have, after the planning and zoning, invite the people, invite the Planning and Zoning Board, invite the council, and we all just talk about it? And, okay, this is what they said, this is where we are, what do you think? And get input from the people. I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand why we can't meet with the people.
They've already spoken to us, and we know what the people already have told us. They, they have been calling, they've been emailing, we have been here at several meetings, and they've been very vocal about what they think and how they feel. So I think.
But do all those people know that how home rule is gonna affect, well, the decision we make and the things we do? Do they all know that? Do they know who their legislators are? Do they know how to, Florida League of Cities, what is wrong with talking about all of this stuff with the citizens? I don't.
I think it is a wonderful idea. Any opportunity that this council wants to meet with the citizens in a workshop, I understand what our city manager said, I think you're right, we will be, we'll be paying attention. But in either scenario, if P and Z is unanimous for, or if they're unanimous against, I would still take an opportunity to meet with the citizens. And it's okay. It, I mean, and if it's state restrictive, again, like Mayor Pro Tem Raymond said, I'll go for another day. But, and if it can't be a workshop because there's not three people, I will have just a standard meeting with you, and it's open invite to the whole council.
Okay, so is that the way we're gonna go? I, well, I can't get three members right now to agree to a meeting.
Well, we agree. Well, I don't know about agreed. My recommendation would be that we have the Planning and Zoning, that prior to Planning and Zoning, if our citizens would like to come and voice some of the, this could also be a, a time that Planning and Zoning provides on home rule. And then, after the Planning and Zoning, we decide as a, as a council, what we do from there. That's my recommendation.
This, this meeting is the.
It's not, it's not to, and the, it's not to say that I don't want a meeting, or I wouldn't say that any other councilman is, we're against meeting with our citizens, because that's not what I'm, I'm saying. I'm just saying that Planning and Zoning, then after Planning and Zoning, we decide based on the input that we get from our citizens and how they vote, and see if anything new comes out that we are ready to interject into the equation.
I think that, I mean, that makes sense, but let's assume that after Planning and Zoning, the things that happen, we feel like we need to meet, let's go ahead and set the date. And we can always cancel. So Planning and Zoning's gonna meet, and if it's March 3rd, we can, you know, you don't have to show up, you can say no. The outcome in Planning and Zoning happened, I don't feel like it's necessary that I come, so you're not gonna go to that meeting. And I might do the same, but I think for the sake of time and for this, we can commit to a date that, again, whatever the scenario is that you would meet for a workshop, the date is a different decision. And if March 3rd works, I, I'm in support of that date.
My recommendation would be March 16th, prior to the city council meeting, that we can assess this.
And then that doesn't give the citizens time to contact their legislature, because.
That gives them more time.
You know, the earlier, the better, that they can contact the state, that, that, you lose two weeks.
No, I'm not saying that they, it gives them time to contact prior to the 16th, and that's my point. It's not gonna stop them from contacting anybody. I would think that they have more of an opportunity if we decide to make it the 16th prior to our, our council meeting. We've got the, we've got the P and Z meeting, and then after that, we can, it gives us plenty of time after P and Z to interact with our citizens. And I don't understand, there's nothing, you, you're talking about March 2nd, what's gonna happen that we need to rush this? We've always been told not to rush things, and we're, I'm, I'm not gonna hurry to rush it. I'd like to get all the recommendations and all the, the many people as possible. I think prior to the council meeting would be an excellent time. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so you got one yes here?
One yes.
And I think we can move on.
Mayor, just for clarity, so we can record properly what we, we think we understand here. Councilmember Kellum requested a workshop meeting at the city council to discuss this on, on March 3rd, or alternately, another day that week, and there's only one other supporting council member, from what I can gather. That being the case, that I would count that as a rejection of that meeting, as a council workshop meeting. However, it's very rare, but two council members can have a meeting, in a, in a public meeting. It would not be called a council workshop, it could not be called a council workshop. It is simply a public meeting with two council members. When that happens, or if that were to happen, minutes would be taken, so staff would have to be in attendance, and I would recommend if, if the goal is for two council members to hold that meeting, that we hold it here in the chambers, the public can be invited, staff would take minutes of that meeting. Lacking a real council workshop, I think that's the only other alternative, based on what I'm hearing here.
Todd, city manager, how is that possible? I mean, what you're saying is, you're going over issues that might be discussed at the council meeting, so under Sunshine rules, how can they go on, how can you have that type of meeting? Because the issues are gonna be discussed at a later day. It would be a publicly noticed meeting, so it would need Sunshine to attend, but you don't have a.
Yeah, so I think a public meeting is requested on March 3rd at 6 o'clock PM. It's open invite to all the council, everyone can come, it's not between two. It sounds like two are gonna show up, but if, there's three, four, five, and more can come, but I'm, we have at least a minimum of two as of today. So it's not, I wanna make it clear, this is a publicly noticed meeting, proper notice, it's in a publicly accessible place, and minutes will be taken, which is the three criteria for Sunshine law. Thank you, Todd, for wanting to support that effort. I will promote this and get as many citizens I possibly can to come, and I'll maybe work with you on anything that we need. I think it's gonna be a very valuable meeting.
So we'll record that as consensus, then, council?
Yes. So, well, yeah, I think Mickey's having.
There's consensus to have a meeting, is, my recommendation, like I said, would be prior to, on the, prior to the, on council meeting, so to say that there's not consensus to have a meeting, that's incorrect. There is consensus to have a meeting, it's just when the meeting would occur.
Well, the earlier, the better is the point.
Well, at, at this point, there's, there's no consensus for a council workshop meeting. So all, all that needs to happen is, assuming the status quo, and nothing changes, Councilmember Kellum and/or Councilmember Morrison contact the city clerk's office to verify that date. We will publicly notice that date, we'll be prepared to take minutes at that meeting, and we'll just march forward with that as our action plan, unless we hear otherwise from any other council members. Maybe one of you might decide not to attend, maybe another council member might decide to attend, we don't know what's gonna happen. That's the best plan we can make at this point, from what I see.
Thank you. A public meeting.
All I wanted.
It's a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So now do we need to?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like for that request that our city attorney said, and if there's any comments back on item number 13, I can move to postpone the item to a date certain, in March, March 16th?
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Councilmember Morrison, and a second by Councilmember Kellum to postpone item number 13 until March, or, I'm sorry, till.
16.
March 16th. To a certain date. Of the rule.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tem Raymond?
Four. I have a question. May I? I'm just wondering, in a meeting such as a workshop, who will chair a meeting such as that? I'm just curious. Todd, you said that that would be appropriate, I just wondered, who would be the chair?
If it was a, if it actually was a council workshop meeting, meaning there would be three or more, if the mayor was there, the mayor should preside. If he's not there, then it should be the mayor pro tem that presides. If neither mayor or mayor pro tem are there, then the three who are forming that meeting of the body would have to point one, two, preside.
Just a point of clarity, Anthony, I think that that's exactly right for the regular city council meetings, but this isn't a sanctioned regular city council meeting. I think this is gonna be, please correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, I think that the format, the format doesn't have to follow our ordinance agenda, like Todd was saying. We could have our own agenda that's kind of just open, and have an open discussion with the citizens, you know.
I mean, the council rules apply when there's a council meeting.
Right.
Unless there are three of you present in an advertised council meeting, then the council rules don't apply. If two council members just wanna have a public meeting, or just one council member, you know, the, the rules kind of make it up as you go, right?
Okay, so what, well, that actually, that's pretty close to what Todd said, it's not exact, so if three come up, it changes, we have to subject ourselves to regular council meeting rules?
If there's gonna be a council meeting, and three of you agree that there's gonna be a council meeting, then it needs, then the meeting needs to be advertised as a council meeting. And unless you guys agree in advance to have a council meeting, and you're gonna move forward with this other public meeting, where right now, two council meeting, two, two council members are going to meet, it's not a council meeting.
Right.
So, you know, if the third council member just happens to show up at that open public meeting, it has not been advertised as a public council meeting, it's, it's still gonna be just an open public meeting.
Okay.
Right, with more than one council member present.
And so there is no.
There's no formal, there's no formal council rule that would apply to that type of meeting, because it was not advertised in advance as a duly notice council meeting.
Okay. And it wasn't disagreeing, we, Todd was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's a good clarification.
Thank you.
Hey, we, we had our motion, and a second, we call the rule.
Councilmember Brown?
Are we, excuse me, are we voting reference to having the meeting?
Postponement. This is your motion. Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tem Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 14. This is ordinance number 11, 2021, Chapter 98 subdivisions. Mr. Garganese, first reading.
Okay, ordinance is, first reading of ordinance number 11-2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending Chapter 98 subdivisions, Division 5, lot splits to authorize certain unapproved lot splits occurring prior to March 16, 2010, under the requirements set forth herein, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the code severability and an effective date. Again, this is first reading, also public hearing. This item was presented to the, you know, Planning and Zoning Board, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended this ordinance favorably for adoption. Before we get into the details of the ordinance, probably going back down memory lane would be helpful to the city council, the way, the rationale and the reasoning for this particular ordinance. When the city of Cape Canaveral was incorporated back in the 60s, just like any other municipality or county municipalities, like Cape Canaveral have the ability to regulate the subdivision of land. In other words, when a property owner wants to divide their property into a, more than one lot, or divide their property into different parcels, the city of Cape Canaveral, like other municipalities and counties, require the prior approval of the division of land. That prior approval is not for purposes of authorizing the conveyance of land to one party to the other. The purpose of. The purpose of that approval, the city approval, is so that the city can regulate and to make sure that the division of land complies with the city code for development permit process purposes. So the city regulates this, the subdivision of land for development permit processes, not for purposes of, you know, saying you can convey your land to so and so or vice versa. So what happened over the course of the years, the city originally required that any division of land into two or more parcels required city approval. But apparently, as far as we can tell by going back, looking at maps and not doing like title searches, over the, over the years, some property owners divided their land without the approval of the city. And some of those lots, you know, exist today. And that's just a fact. And the problem that the staff has is that sometimes, you know, the city's not aware of the, of these unauthorized subdivisions of land until somebody shows up at the building permit counter and asks for a permit. At which point the city goes, okay, here's your parcel of land. And the city will inquire, well, how did this get subdivided? It wasn't approved by the city. Sometimes, you know, those subdivisions of land don't even comply with the city's code. They're not, they don't have adequate size, they're, you know, they're, they're just a mess. So back in twenty ten, the city council had the wisdom and foresight to carve out a little exception to the platting requirements and requires if anybody wants to divide their land into no more than two lots, there's a lot split process. Not, a property owner would not have to go forward with a plat of their property. They can come in by resolution, the council can approve a lot split resolution, which splits the lots into no more than two. So back, as far as we can tell, from twenty ten forward, we're not currently, where, correct me if I'm wrong, David, any unauthorized lot splits. But we are aware that there were some unauthorized lot splits prior to twenty ten. In fact, some of them that we're aware of go back to the eighties. And however, you know, those, those, some of those lots that have been unauthorized lot splits actually do comply with the intent and spirit of the city's codes, they have adequate size, they have access to rights of way. So the intent of this ordinance is for those unauthorized lot splits that occurred prior to twenty ten, if they meet certain requirements that are enumerated in this ordinance, city staff can process a development permit, right? And the unauthorized lot split will be recognized by the city to, for innocent third parties that have acquired these unauthorized lot split parcels. Unbeknownst to them, that were, you know, they were, they were done on, you know, unauthorized by the city. So the city is trying to make it a little easier for those innocent third parties to come forward and get their development permit, right? Rather than have to go through, you know, rectifying a previous wrong. So this is kind of an ordinance that authorizes some equitable relief for certain property owners. And so when you look at the body of the ordinance, that's that's really the way it's worded. On page, starting on page four of six, it talks about unapproved lot splits prior to March sixteenth, twenty ten. And they'll be recognized and considered approved by the city for development permit purposes without complying with the requirements of this chapter, which is without requiring a lot split or a plat. So an after the fact lot split permit will not be required. Provided those lots that were split without city approval meet the criteria A through E that's set forth in in the ordinance. So I'd be happy to stop there, and if you had any questions about the rationale, I'd be happy to answer them. If you have any specific questions regarding the criteria, I'd be happy to answer those as well. But I just, I, I, did I miss anything like in terms of the rationale for this ordinance?
Yeah, I, no, you haven't. I'm going to put the rationale in my own words, okay? It's very difficult to look across your desk and tell somebody who's just spent three hundred thousand dollars on a piece of property. It was, my words, duped into find this, they didn't do their, didn't do exhaustive due diligence as possibly they could have. These lots show up on the property appraiser's website as a, as a parcel. They have unique parcel numbers because the, you know, whoever did this went down and recorded a deed or a survey. So you know, we've got, we've got, it's, it's, it's a sad situation. And we're trying to come up with this, I think Anthony's term was equitable relief for these individuals. They still have to meet the, meet the minimum zoning requirements. So we're not going to have any incompatibilities as far as parcels go next to each other. So that's not, should not be an issue. It's just to help out some of our residents, our property owners who've put themselves in a bad situation.
How is this going to affect the lots that are, like in the R two districts that are seventy two foot or seventy five foot or some of them? And they're split into two separate ownerships now, which makes a lot thirty six inch or thirty two foot and maybe just from thirty two foot or thirty six. And our, our, our lot requirement is a minimum fifty foot. What do they do as far as if they want to build a new structure, how are they going to be set back?
We've got hundreds of lots in the city, in particularly the presidential streets that are zoned R two. And these are all, I'll call them legacy lots, nonconforming lots of record. I think it's a technical term for them. They don't meet our minimum R two zoning district standards, which is, I believe it's seventy five feet from frontage. All these, all these lots of record are fifty feet. And so we do have language in the code that that recognizes this and allows a single family home or a duplex, I believe, to be built on a lot of record. Notwithstanding in meeting the dimensional requirements of the zoning district, so.
That's a lot of record that's
Yes.
recognized by the city for development purposes. The mayor might be alluding to the what happens if you have an unauthorized lot that's vacant? That's been, you know, that's been split, that doesn't comply with, with the requirements, the lot requirements of the code. They would, that type of situation under this ordinance, they would not, they would still not be recognized as as an adequately sized developable lot.
Correct.
Because one of the criteria for an after the, one of the criteria for the equitable relief under this ordinance is that the parcels created by that unauthorized lot split comply with the minimum lot size requirement.
Correct.
So you might, you might have situations where you have a regulation sized lot and you have, it was unauthorized, divided into two lots. There's a house on one half of the lot. This ordinance would not recognize the vacant portion. Because the vacant portion does not comply with the city, minimum city code requirement.
Right.
This ordinance is addressing those unauthorized lot splits that comply.
With an existing structure with a duplex, that's that lots been split. There's two different owners of the duplex on the seventy, seventy foot lot. Yeah, but it costs several.
If that's on the, this ordinance is not intended to address that situation. This ordinance is intended to address, probably put there's not any construction on, on the lots already. Those would be non, nonconforming.
They have a problem, what are we going to do?
The scenario you're painting is if there's a, a piece of property has a duplex.
It's been split by the county.
Right.
They have, each one of them have a, have a seven, or the seventy foot lot's been split in half.
Right, so they're two.
They've got thirty six feet, the other guy's got thirty one. They're, they're independently owned, they're duplexes. They're selling them in the county splitting a lot. I brought this to you.
If there exists. We had, we had that situation, they would be required to come in and get an after the fact replat. If it's more than two lots, have to come in and get an after the fact replat or lot split. Under that scenario, that's, that's not what this ordinance is intended to address.
Wouldn't that be, we had this before with the non conformity of some of the condos. Remember where we had the lady lost the sale of contract? Probably the real estate companies, and then when it goes to the, to their title searching, they closing it.
When it should be picked up, but a lot of them don't pick it up.
If that guy's place is destroyed.
Have to.
There are scenarios, I mean, come on, talk about the Rouse situation, I want to put that on the table. We have an, we have an apartment complex where it was permitted as apartment complex and then the property owner decided to come in and on his own and, and split the units up and, and divide the property without the approval of the city. That, that, that particular scenario, this ordinance doesn't provide any equitable relief. Right, so this is the, this is, this is an equitable, I use the term equitable because it's an equitable ordinance to address those, those innocent third parties that actually acquired these unauthorized lot splits. And for all intents and purposes, if they would come in the door today for approval of that lot split, the city probably would approve it without a doubt because it complies with the minimum standards of the city. So rather than, what Dave is telling you, rather than tell that person, sorry, we're not going to recognize the lot that you just purchased. You have to now go through the subdivision of land process. We're trying to avoid that type of scenario. Because in some cases, the property owner, the former property owner that authorized and did the unauthorized lot split still owns one lot and the innocent third party owns another, that's one factual scenario. We have scenarios where the unauthorized lot split, the former property owner doesn't own any of them. And we have innocent third parties that are like, now what do we do? Property's already been split. Dave's like, how do we issue a development permit when we don't even recognize the division of land that occurred? Well, this ordinance would be if you can check the box and meet the criteria. Dave can say, well, we can, we can give you this equitable relief. We'll recognize your lot and we'll issue you a building permit to build whatever it is you want to build without having to go in through the, you know, the brain damage of trying to figure out how to authorize what was unauthorized first. Didn't come in for a proper city approval. Now that, that helped it all, Dave.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, Dave was trying to present what Harry has on his head.
You know, no, I can't add anything to that. I, I'll, I, I just, I'm just on the.
They got a problem.
Yeah, I'm in the, poor folks are just. I'm not going to say they've spent their life savings on a piece of property, but these are big numbers and they've they, they need some, they need some.
Did you say these four folks? That was one of my questions, how many people is this impacting?
I know of about, and this is not an exhaustive count. I know of approximately ten parcels that this would affect.
Keep in mind, it becomes apparent that there's a problem when the people actually show up at city hall.
Right.
Looking for a permit. This is not the type of situation where you can just kind of look at a, look at a map and say, well, this was done, this is unauthorized, this is, this was authorized. Because you would literally have to go back through sixty years of city records and the title of the property to see whether or not something is has been, hasn't been done according to the city code.
Yeah.
It's, it's some of that work is done when the person comes in and, you know, Dave goes, there's something's not right here. And then we start digging into it, we spend hours digging into these situations to realize like, okay, this wasn't authorized. And that, you know, and meanwhile, the person that wants the permit to build something is waiting for us to try to figure out what happened here, only to, you know, be put in a box that's saying the lot was split without the city approval and now you need city approval. So rather than only be left with the option of saying, now you got to go get the city council's approval for the lot split or have to replat. Under these narrow equitable circumstances, meeting this criteria, Dave could say, okay, we'll recognize the unauthorized lot split that occurred prior to March sixteenth, twenty ten. And the city then can proceed with the permitting, the, the building permits, the site plans or whatever is required to develop the property. But we, we, we're drawing a line in the sand of March sixteenth, twenty ten. Because on that date, it was very clear with the code that the council adopted, that if you were going to divide your property into no more than two lots, you were required to come forward with a lot split application and get a lot split approved by the council. It was a, it was a very, it was a different, I mean, the process was put in place. From that date forward, we're going to hold people to the, to the lot split requirement that the council approved in twenty ten. What happened prior to that is just, I mean, I, I can't understate the amount of brain damage that would be to try to deal with this on a super comprehensive stand, standpoint.
Sounds like we need to, the lot splits that I'm referring to are happening today. We need to have a county or somebody. These, these people buy these things and split them and sell them off.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
The county's position is it's not our, it's not our concern, we're not going to reach out to the city and say, are these buildable lots they?
Won't they just hand them a slip from the city of Cape Canaveral when they put in through two nine two zero and say, here's the city's policies, can they add that to their lot split applications and say, you know, you needed here to this? I mean, at a minimum.
We've asked for that for years. This goes back, I, I know the mayor Hogan, I discussed this probably ten or twelve years ago. The county's position is exactly as Dave says. They say it is a constitutional right to buy and sell land, and they're not going to interfere with that.
I think they have a disclaimer. I think that they may have, I can't remember the number of forms I look at on a daily basis, but I thought they had a disclaimer that, you know, the fact that they're going to record this deed doesn't, you need to check with your local government on whether there's.
Like a file found down in very.
Probably, yeah, buried in there. I mean, they're, they're, the clerk of the court will tell you that my job is to record deeds that are presented that meet the proper legal form. It's the city's job to regulate the subdivision of land and whether or not a permit can be issued. Todd's correct, the city manager's correct, the case law is, you know, people have the right to convey land freely in this country. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they have a right to a development permit when the city tells them, you know, we're not going to recognize what you're conveying.
Right, and I think that that's where it is, we're not the authority to do the lot split, not, right? I mean, we.
The deed, why not, that's already the, yeah, to prevent them from reporting the deed.
We are the, the authority for the permit. And, you know, it's, you know, we're, we're trying to impose rules that were superseded by the county, right? I mean, and that's, that's where it kind of falls apart.
Yeah, it falls apart, we get overlapping responsibilities between the clerk of the court and the city's right to regulate the division of land. Everybody does their own thing, but the city has to deal with the aftermath.
Yeah, we're left holding.
Left holding the bag because the, the last thing is, is what, what the person really wants is, is buildable interest.
Yeah. Dave, are there currently any applications pending the result of this ordinance? I'm asking if there are any current applications pending the result, the outcome of this ordinance? I'm asking if there are any current applications pending the result, the outcome of this ordinance.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we have necessarily any applications on my desk, but we certainly have had conversations awaiting a decision on this ordinance.
Thank you. And, and I think Anthony would agree. This is providing some limited amount of relief for special circumstance. I don't see any harm in approving this and it could do some good, it could help. But it appears there's no rush either.
If it helps somebody, okay, that's fine. But I just feel sorry for the people that. I feel for the other two. Hey, uh, counsel. Anybody have any comments?
I, um, no, I think that that relief is a good thing. We're gonna have two readings of this, right? It's cause the ordinance change, okay? Um. Yeah, maybe we should get out of the lots business altogether and give it to them. But I just have one final clarity. A county commission vote could change this, right? No? Is it state?
Um. The, the state statute regarding plating and each local government has the authority to, um, establish, um, additional standards.
Okay.
Than, uh, than the state statute. And that's what, as the county does it for unincorporated, Bravard County, the cities in Bravard County do it, do it for themselves.
But couldn't the county commission vote on an administrative policy?
They, um, they could potentially.
Adhere to the local, um, you know, municipalities' rules? I mean, i- if we spoke with our county commissioner and said, hey, you're causing a headache for Cape Canaveral, um, the administration of your, they couldn't vote that through with the county manager?
Adhere to that? Like, get into some theoretical principles. Um, the county as a home rule, county, county charter could adopt countywide subdivision of land requirements. What's causing the problem, however, for, for the city of Cape Canaveral as well as all of the other cities in Bravard County and around the state of Florida is it's the clerk of the court. And the clerk of the court accepting deeds to divide land is what's at issue in the county. Bravard County Commission, I don't believe can adopt anything, any regulation that prevents the clerk of the court from accepting those deeds. So I, I'm not sure, uh, the county commission could help us.
Okay.
With this scenario. This is a very local, uh, problem for the city of Cape Canaveral and its permitting process.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Go to public here. We've mentioned it. Daniel, do you have any hands on?
Uh, yes, sir. There are two hands raised. The first one is Alexander Gans. Mr. Gans, you're live. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions posted in regards to the previous amendment about the, um, vacation rental ordinances. And I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to address all of these, but I was curious on what public input has been actually been received in considering these amendments from the city council.
That, that's not under, but like Daniel, what he said. Yeah, the vacation rental ordinance item is, is, has been postponed to March sixteenth. That we're currently discussing a lot split ordinance. It's a totally unrelated subject.
So there's no public comment allowed, uh, if the item got postponed?
The mayor opened up.
We had, we had that discussion to start off with and then, uh.
I raised my hand as the amendment was called and a couple of times during the amendment, I was ignored.
Okay, so go ahead with what you wanna say.
I was just, I was just curious how the, uh, current amendments and regulations have been developed and what the public input has been so far on the amendment that are being proposed.
We really didn't have any discussion other than whether we were gonna hear it tonight or postpone it. And the conclusion came that they're, they're gonna have a public meeting advertised to hear this before it comes back. And that date hasn't been set yet.
And has the city, uh, has the city council considered any input from the P N Z so far?
They've already had, uh.
We've, we've, we've met, the P N Z court has met once, uh, to address specifically five questions that the council wanted them to focus on. Uh, they held a public hearing last month. They'll be held, holding another public hearing on this issue next Wednesday, which I believe is the twenty fourth. Um, so if you would like to come and speak to that issue, um, you can actually come physically to the coun, to the chambers here and speak, or you can phone in. So you have, you have an opportunity, uh, at that meeting to be heard and to have input on that issue. At the P and, with P and Z, you also have an opportunity with the council at their next council meeting as a, as a council as a whole. Sounds like there might be a meeting too.
Right. There's, there's also the additional meeting that council member Callum has proposed, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So.
I'm, I'm, I'm just worried that, uh, the opinions of existing vacation rental owners and citizens, which could be both, are being ignored by the city council. So I, I feel like honestly that the city council is trying to rush this item through approval. Uh, maybe under the premise to grandfather in certain amendments before state legislation, um, is enacting new enforcement. So I'm curious what the city council's opinion on that is.
Yes, we're the P N Z. We went back to the P N Z and then we're having another meeting on the third.
Yeah. So I want to assure you that you're not being, your comments are not being ignored nor the comments of the residents. There's been, we've been discussing this issue for months, if not years. And, uh, um, as I said, next Wednesday, you have an opportunity to be heard.
And I wouldn't argue that we're rushing things because we just agreed to postpone it.
I, I agree, but that was, um, after a position from council member Callum and that went on for some time. So I had the feeling that the majority of the city council is actually trying to push things forward.
Not trying to push anything, sir. We're just trying to get it right and make sure it's right.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Bye bye. Hey, uh, Daniel, is there somebody left hand you said?
Uh, yes, sir. One more hand is raised, uh, Mr. Patrick Campbell. Mr. Campbell, you are live. You have three minutes, sir.
Hey, thank you. I believe, uh, one of the lots that have been split, uh, is on Surf Drive. For the most part, uh, Surf Drive is single family homes on large lots. This split would allow, apparently with this revision, uh, allow two residents to be built on one lot. I've talked to a couple of my neighbors. They didn't know anything about this. I would like the city council to defer, uh, voting on this until much more detail can be provided about what citizens this is hurting, what citizens this is helping. In particular, the three hundred thousand dollar expenses for things they can't do anything with. Certainly a lot on Surf Drive doesn't fall into that. Uh, whoever owns it can do the same thing everybody else has done and put a single family home on it. There's also a discrepancy in the current, um, code of ordinances where it talks about you must have direct or indirect access. I believe this revision says direct access. And I really don't know what that means, but I'm assuming it's a flag lot for the back lot. I'd like more detail on it and I'd like, uh, to have an opportunity to get the citizens that live on, on Surf Drive to understand what's, what this is really about. Thank you.
Daniel, do you have any other hands?
Uh. Mr. Gans has his hand raised again. Uh, I'll, I'll give, uh, should, should I mute him, sir?
Counsel. I'm here, Mr. Gans again.
Your call.
Okay, Mr. Gans, go ahead. Daniel, I'm muted.
All right, Mr. Gans, you're live again.
Call him again, Daniel. Get it right.
Mr. Gans, you're live. If, you had, you had your hand raised again if you wish to speak.
Is it Daniel or not?
He is unmuted, but not, not responding, sir.
Okay, we're closed publicly. Back to the council. Counsel. Comment. All right. This is, this is an ongoing problem and I don't think that'll ever, ever be solved. What you do, uh, voice your opinion on it and let's move forward.
Um, I have a question. Um, Dave, is there what Mr. Campbell was talking about? Um, about how many people this will affect or not affect? Is there a way that you can get that information to us before the next uh, meeting? This is the first reading, so I'm sure.
Definitely, definitely. I'd also encourage Mr. Campbell to call me up and I can speak directly to him. Or any of, any of his residents or neighbors on Surf Drive. Um, yeah, I mean, one comment he made was about having two homes on a parcel. That's, that's not what this is dealing with. We're, we're not suggesting that. We're not recommending that. This would be one house on one parcel and the parcel meets the minimum underlying zoning requirements. So we're not suggesting that a parcel, and as, as the council may recall, that's why I specifically said earlier that we're not asking, we're not trying to create compatibility issues. We don't want to be creating, allowing homes on postage stamped lots when you have, let's just call them estate lots surrounding. These lots have to meet the minimum zoning, this minimum zoning, uh, dimensional and, and area requirement, so.
You know, something about like, um, was this parcel property?
The code does allow for, um, currently, even today, the code does allow for either direct access to the city street or, um, and I can't remember the specific language, uh, but a, a property can gain access via a access easement. Which means that the lot itself doesn't have to touch the street, but it can gain it through an easement across somebody else's property.
We're in the city. We have those.
It's in the code today.
We have several of those.
Yeah.
I mean, this ordinance, and maybe we want to take a look at that issue, um, a little bit more carefully. This ordinance as a criteria says each of the two, each of the two lots or parcels created by the lot split are adjacent and have direct ingress, egress to the public or approved private street. Um, again, trying to require some frontage on a, on a, on a private, on a, on a private or public street. Um, additionally, um, another criteria is the determination that the lots or parcels are compatible, are compatible and in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood, including with respect to the size of existing surrounding lots and the development trends in the neighborhood which have been previously approved by the council. So, um, I hear the concerns of Mr. Campbell. I think there's been some attempt to address those concerns about property owners not having access to public or private streets, direct access, adjacent access, as well as, um, compatibility with the, with the neighborhood. So maybe, maybe there needs to be more discussion on those items, but there is an attempt to, um, try to, um, address, I think, some of the concerns I heard.
So you are, are you recommending that we, we might need to have a little bit more discussion?
Well, I mean, you take the public input. I mean, I think council wants it, maybe some more, um, data about some of the lots we're talking about. And, um, if we need to, you know, address some, some, some provision, additional provisions, we can go ahead and do that before second and final reading, um, during, during the next council meeting. Um, I mean, those are legitimate concerns. Um, we, and I think we made an effort to try to address them straight up in this, in this ordinance. And maybe we didn't go far enough. Maybe we did. I don't know. Um, that's for you to determine at the end of the day.
I, I think anytime you get into land splitting and use like this, you're gonna have a problem. You'll get that one solved and there'll be two more to look at. Never seems that you can get all the answers, but, yeah, I would, uh, I don't have a problem with waiting. Go to our second bite at it in another month and get the answers to what you heard and see what we got.
It, Bart's voting to approve it though. I mean, without having the information, you know, to vote for it and we come down after the information, we turn against it. Are those implications? I knew defer was brought up. Um. Would that not be? We'd have to advertise it three times then, right? If, if it was deferred, or would we be able to do the date certain? Postpone?
Not sure if this is advertising in the newspaper. Dave, I don't believe so. But it, it will be for, for second and final reading.
Okay.
So the council can freely make, you know, changes, um, to this ordinance, you know, during, during second reading, prior to second reading. Your prerogative. So there wouldn't be a need to postpone it to preserve advertisement. You can either take action tonight on first reading, in which case the clerk will, uh, advertise the ordinance for second reading in the newspaper before the March meeting.
Okay.
Um, or you not take any action and postpone first reading until March sixteenth. It's your prerogative.
Did you go in?
I, yep. I actually like that. I think we I would move that we, we postpone, don't take any action until we get further information. Um, and have first reading on March sixteenth.
And, and mayor, before we call the question, just to clarify that additional information that we're looking for. We want to have an approximate count of how many lots that we have like this. I think, uh, also as expressed, we want to define direct ingress and egress as it differs from indirect ingress and egress. At what point are we talking about an easement? So we'll bring those items of clarity back to you in terms of definitions. Uh, was there anything else that I'm missing?
No.
Lot split.
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll bring that information back.
Uh, it's a lot of this. It's always problems. Hey, if we're gonna move to postpone it, we need a motion.
You had a motion.
There was a motion and a second.
You had a motion and a second. It's whether or not you wanna.
Did you? Okay, you had a second. I'm sorry. All right, then we'll, uh, call the question on the postponement.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hogue?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right. Item number fifteen is council selection for the two thousand twenty-one Space Coast League of Cities advocacy team member. And, uh, this was a request that was put in by the, uh, advocacy director, Mr. Montic Nero. As please, I'm asking the council, uh, we appoint an advocacy member to the Space Coast League of City Advocacy Team. Motion for, for, above motion for nominations.
Is there any reason why our current League of Cities representative can't be an advocate? Cause I was an advocate when I was.
You have to be an elected official.
Well, I'm talking about our current League of Cities representative, which is, she's on the board. Can she be on the board?
Yeah.
Rocky was the advocacy member.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm saying she could serve as both. She could serve in two roles. We verified that.
Let me explain. Rocky Randall's was the advocate. And he worked on the advocacy committee, but since he's done that for three years, the last three years, plus probably another twenty-three. But anyway, uh, he is no longer elected. But anyway, he is no longer elected, so that's the reason why we have to now do this.
I would like to nominate myself. Can I do that?
Do you like to torture yourself?
No, I would like to get more involved with the League of Cities, I think, and bring the education to you.
You want to nominate yourself?
Volunteering, right?
Plot for punishment. Do you like that? Any other nominations before we close?
Not May Angela, she's already serving the capacity of Space Coast League of Cities Representative for our city. Like I said, I served in both capacities when I was there.
I just want to clarify something here. First, I serve on the Space Coast League of Cities Florida Utilities and Natural Resources Board, but and I'm not in a position to even do this, so I'm thankful for whoever can step up to the plate and thankful for Rocky Randalls. But in the past where we've had two different people who might be interested, and I haven't heard if Mayor Pro Tim Raymond is even interested. But we've done this process that I, I've never really understood or liked. It's whoever gets the motion first gets it. And I think we should, if there are two, we should call two full votes through and the one with the most amount of votes gets it. I don't know what to do with a tie, I'm not going to run that scenario, but there was a situation a couple of times in the past where there was this race that, well, I moved for them and then it was just really messy. And so just for a matter of formality, mayor, this is your meeting, you chairing it. I'm just making a request before we get in this.
I just.
Whoever gets.
Who's here, everybody?
I just, I just want to clarify.
Nobody left out.
I just want to clarify. I have been asked about the advocacy committee. The reason why I didn't volunteer for this was out of deference to Rocky Randalls. And Rocky said that he will continue to go to Tallahassee to do this. And naturally, he is our biggest cheerleader for Cape Canaveral, I have to say that. And of course I want to do this because we've already set the priorities for this year and we've been working on this diligently all along. And this is my fourth year as the board. And yes, I do understand the priorities and the system and the reason why it's important to advocate for our city and for our whole state. Thank you. Yes, I would like to do it, thank you.
I would like a chance to be on the board and learn as much as Mayor Pro Tim. And I think this is a great time for me to be on the board and, you know, everybody needs a chance to learn, so I, yeah. I'm not, well, the advocate.
It's the advocacy committee. It's different.
I'm a, I've always been an advocate to get people to go and get motivated. The League of Cities is very important to the cities because that's where most of the legislation gets a kickoff from, is the cities. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna be the heartbreaker, I guess, I'm gonna support Nikki, because I feel like Angela, you do a great job for the league. You're, you're a director. You can always go to advocacy anytime you want. Nikki wants to get involved. I don't want to deny her the opportunity. You can always get involved, or you can volunteer for anything, it takes you like a vacuum cleaner, they'll suck you out of it.
Well, I, I talked to Dominic and he, you know, he was telling me about it, what, and I was, and it was really interesting and I.
We've been operating with, with Rocky for long as I can remember, we've had advocacy teams.
Right.
Rocky's been our advocate. In fact, I was gonna do, I was gonna be the advocate.
I'd like a chance.
I'll let him go ahead and I was gonna alternate for him years ago. But anyway.
That's okay with me.
You do a lot of running, you go to Tallahassee a lot.
Yeah.
You can't take your golf cart. But we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna support you, I guess, but I, I do want to see you fill that out and it's a very important position. And you're speaking for all of cities.
That's what I'm here for.
Angela, I would like to see two people out. I'd like to do that too. I, I think Nikki's, Nikki's got a good heart to try it. We'll see, if you don't want to fill the obligation later, that is fine. Just want to see everybody involved, I'd like to. It's just too bad we haven't been able to do our meetings in, or in public like they do. Have our council meetings like we're supposed to. Maybe next year.
Do we need a vote?
We're gonna follow the rule.
No, you need a motion. We had two nominations, but.
We're gonna get it.
You gotta make a motion on one of them.
We're gonna get a motion to accept nomination of.
If we're gonna go to the both of them, or we want to just vote for one?
Nikki nominated herself, she moved to nominate herself. Did you second it?
The process, no, we were just discussing.
I'm seconding. There's a two step, if you want to go technical, Robert's rules is the nomination process. Once the nominations are done and closed, then you have your nominees and then the council votes on, on one of the nominees to fill the, the appointment. So I think Mr. Callum volunteered to serve, I think Mayor Pro Tim also indicated that, like Ms. Raymond. Unless there are any other nominations, those are, the nomination portion's closed, you have two nominations and now the council is free to make a motion to appoint one of the nominees to serve in this, this capacity. So a motion would be in order if there are no other nominations.
She nominated herself and I second her.
Second, second, second is not required. The flaw with that process, and I may be wrong, is that when you do that, when you nominate two for this, think about this. I rush and I go, I nominate to vote for, let's say, Nikki. Well, we, we do the vote. Nikki's three-two. Passes. Well, had we did another vote, we might have voted unanimous for Angela. Mayor Pro Tim, excuse me. So that was, that's where I think the flaw is in that system. The first gets it, but actually the entire body unanimously could have supported another candidate. Is that?
Yeah, you left out the discussion, after the nominations, you left out the discussion part. So after the nominations are closed, then you have your list of nominees, the governing body then is supposed to discuss amongst themselves who they would like among the nominees to serve. At that point, you would think that the, the decision is becoming crystallized to the point where then a motion is made. You are sometimes, you kind of jump to the gun and just try to make the appointment without going through step one nomination and step two discussion. So I think you're, you got your nominations on the floor, you can discuss. And then when you think the decision is becoming crystallized, you make a motion to make, make the appointment.
Okay.
Hopefully that helps a little. It's a little messy.
Oh, we had a small discussion.
Yes.
I guess we're open for discussion right now.
I guess so.
I think that Councilman Callum would, would do an excellent job. But I also think experience matters and I know you don't get experience when you're not doing it, but I know Angela has served that capacity as the Space Coast League of Cities Representative for Cape Canaveral. And I know that she has spent the time and the due diligence that it requires, not to say that, that Nikki wouldn't do the same. But I, this is a pivotal time, I think we need somebody experienced in it that has done that. We're talking about short-term rentals, we're talking about traveling to Tallahassee and to have somebody that hasn't been in that capacity. I think right now is, it's utmost important that we go ahead and stay with the person that has been attending all the meetings. I don't know if Nikki has, you, you've shown an interest in it, but I don't know. Have you been attending any of the Space Coast League of Cities meeting prior to just this nomination?
Yes, until they stopped having them, I went to every one.
Okay. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah. I think Nikki's lived here, or Councilmember Callum's been here over twenty-five years. And so that, that experience I value. She lives in a single family neighborhood and we heard earlier, you know, she's going to be directly impacted by it, but I, if we're ready, I can, I can move. I move that we nominate or appoint, excuse me, Councilmember Callum for the Space Coast League of Cities Advocacy Team Member.
We're re-nominating her? I thought you said nominate.
I said nominate and I corrected it. I'm sorry. I, I move that we appoint Councilmember Kevin, uh, Callum to the Space Coast League of Cities Advocacy Team.
Oh, sir. Was there any reason you need even to have a vote now, because it's obvious Nikki recommended herself.
One of the votes was to fulfill the obligation of what we're.
Follow the rule.
Ready? Councilmember Brown?
Against.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right, that's, that was a heartbreaker and I, I'm only doing it because I'd like to see Nikki get involved more deeply than what she has been. I know she's been to meetings, I've sat at meetings with her and talked with her. And I would like to see the meetings get back to normal again, hopefully one day with the league, because it's very important to the city.
They're not going to be, they're still on, the board meetings are online. And it, but the way that it's working and it seems as though the agreement of the Board of Directors, they, at this point, they're only going month by month. So we're conducting, I know it's, it's terrible. It's terrible.
Of course, they don't listen to you anyway.
But anyway, they're going month by month, depending upon what goes on with the pandemic, so.
All right.
Anybody can listen to the Zoom, it is on Zoom.
It brings our meeting to a conclusion, there's any dis. Report, go quick.
I would just like to say thank you to Dave and his crew for all of the work they did on the rezoning. That was a lot of work and they, it's something that needed to be done and for a long time, thank you, Anthony, for your work. And I'm excited about the State of the City coming out.
Yes.
Awesome. And then Estava, thank you. And I really don't have, and I'm so happy for the group that stayed for the meeting and protected our trees. I'm really excited about that. Thank you so much for all you did and for sticking up for the tree. Thank you.
Though she stole my thunder, I was going to mention the State of the City, but while we're at it, I just want to thank John Delay and his team for what a great audit this year.
Jorgina, how about you?
Uh, no report.
All right. Andy?